Hi, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America and the Republic of Puerto Rico stands by nation, our government, and the citizens for the liberation and justice for all.
We have multiple players.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening.
My good morning.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. And we have all four counselors present this evening, and our first order of business is approving the minutes from our meeting on September tenth. Does anyone have any edits to the minutes from September tenth?
No.
Any edits? All right, I'll make a motion to sign the meeting minutes from September tenth to November twenty-four as written.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for you. Our next order of business, signing of the treasurer's warrant.
Madam Chair, I move you to sign the treasurer's warrant dated nine, 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 nineteen, twenty, twenty-four, in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents.
Second. Thank you. The motion in a second. Any discussion? Questions? Right. All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for you. All right, our, the meat of our meeting this evening, I have a presentation this evening from right here, so we've got several folks here from right here, so also from the Downtown Revitalization Committee, um, to kind of report out on the findings, right, that, the whole thing, so, um, I'm gonna invite Jeff up and whomever else is going to give the presentation, um, I actually have no idea who's gonna do the talking.
Um, Jeff will be, uh, Jeff probably will lead, but also, uh, Council Costello, who is currently acting as the chair of the committee, so you two can certainly present whatever, Jeff, step up.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay.
And just make sure you speak into the microphone. We all can probably hear in the room, but not make sure we're on Zoom, can't do.
Right, yep. All right, well, good evening. Can get the, uh,
if you shut down your email, try to back off, remember. We do have it in front of us. The council does.
So, that was a packet that I sent out. He said that there has been some edits.
Aye.
To the packet that was, uh, I did up.
Thank you, Jeff, that did work. So, let's go here.
All right, here we go.
You can add energy now, but I'm gonna say hi.
The bottom, so the very bottom, um, right, there's like a slider bar, and the very first thing to the left, the very first icon to the left of the slider bar, keep going to the right, right, there you go.
It's fine, guys, I'm not very versed in the powerpoint, or, or, or anything.
Oh, well, that's what I wanted to, oh, here we go.
Perfect. All right, so, um, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to kind of present our report here on the Downtown Revitalization Plan. Um, we've, uh, been through a process here for the last almost eleven months or so here, going through and figuring out what the action items and, uh, what the key items that the town wants to try to accomplish, so, um, I think we ought to give a, a nice thank you for all the town staff that can go to the next, next one. Um, I've been involved with this in the Downtown Revitalization Committee. There it is. But, uh, these folks have been, you know, dedicated to the, to the process, uh, been having monthly meetings with, with folks and, uh, getting a lot of good input and guidance from, from everyone. Uh, so includes all the town staff, Tim, Jennifer, Paul Schumaker here, and, uh, all the advisory committee members. Um, former Council Seer and, uh, current Councilor Costello, uh, as the chairs for, for that committee. So, again, we all thank, uh, thank those folks for all their time and dedication putting into this. And go on to the, to the next one. Um, so what we wanted to kind of talk about here tonight is, um, just kind of give you a recap of, of, of process that we went through. Um, kind of focus in on the action item list, uh, that was developed. And also talk about some, you know, potential funding sources for various different initiatives, uh, what the next steps and that sort of thing, and Kelly's gonna, um, talk a little bit further on a couple of, kind of, concept renderings and stuff that we put together. So, the process that we went through, um, we had our first initial meeting with the committee back in November, and, uh, like I mentioned, we had had monthly meetings as, as the process went along. Um, so, you know, we had a few meetings and we kind of get geared up to having the first public workshop that was held in January. And then, you know, working with the committee and input that we got from the first workshop, we kind of honed in on a questionnaire that was, uh, distributed to a lot of the town folks. And we got an overwhelming response to the, to the questionnaire, it was like two hundred and eighty something responses that we got, I mean, it was, it was terrific, all the public input and stuff that we got. So we brought that information back and we had another, uh, workshop, um, so there was good public involvement all the way through this process. Uh, local press coverage, had a few articles and that sort of thing. Um, so with that information, we kind of compiled all that and got our report, uh, pulled together and, um, not really surprising, but, but some of the key items that were, were mentioned are like the, uh, transportation infrastructure, pedestrian safety, trying to enhance the historic character, and we'll go down a little bit further on those as, as we go through. And go to the, the next one there. So the overall goals, um, of the process is, you know, develop a consensus, the vision here for the downtown, the public supports. Um, get a bunch of prioritized action items, um, that can go through and, uh, you know, kind of a checklist of things for the town can work on toward, uh, downtown revitalization. And we want to make sure that it all meets the main Department of, uh, Economic and Community Development, meets their guidelines and the report format that we pull together. And, you know, get all this pulled in and with the other items that have gone on with the market study and some of the transportation planning that's happened, the comp plan now, you know, really positions the town for getting additional funding opportunities and stuff to try to implement some of these. Um, you can go to the, the next one here. The, uh, the plan, uh, this, like I say, follows the main DECD guidelines, Economic and Community Development Department. Um, so it talks about, uh, you know, kind of gives an overview of the downtown, uh, we kind of define the study area. We looked at zoning ordinances and farm plan. I go through, uh, what you have for retail, business, uh, residential, um, inventory and opportunities in town. Employment opportunities, also start looking at some of the infrastructure items, you know, whether that's, uh, you know, pedestrian improvements, ADA accessibility, um, bicycle, uh, connections, uh, streetscape type items, any other infrastructure that may, uh, need to be improvements over time. Also look at signage, parking, recreation, open spaces and that sort of thing. These are the typical sections that are outlined in, in the DECD guidelines for, for these downtown plans, so been a good formula to use for, um, on other projects. So this is a study area, uh, map that we ended up coming up with and, um, working with the group. And, uh, so the area in red is kind of the, the focus of the study area. Um, and within that, uh, there's kind of that orange area which is kind of highlights the, the core of the downtown. Uh, emphasis was kind of light from bridge to bridge when we were looking at the potential projects and things and our areas for improvement. Um, other items that we've got noted here, um, is the historic district, and this is from the historic register. And it's a little bit different from the historic properties, uh, that's in the town ordinance. But, um, so that's outlined there, we've got a kind of faint circle, kind of centered on Main and Portland Street intersection that kind of gives you a half mile radius, uh, within the downtown. And we felt it was important also to kind of highlight the connection from the downtown area down toward Vine Street and upon Woods area, so that's kind of highlighted down on the lower part of the screen. Um, okay, go to the next one, so, you know, we gathered all this information and stuff pulled together, um, started formulating the report in those various different sections. Um, from there, we developed some initial findings and recommendations for each of those sections. And then we brought that to the second public workshop for people to kind of, uh, you know, discuss those, look at those, and, uh, start looking at, uh, where the priorities and stuff are. Um, so from a combination of working with the committee, the work, the, the workshops that were held, and then the questionnaire responses, we were able to kind of come up with a prioritized list of, of action items time to take. So some of the key findings here, um, South Burwick's really in a, a great position here to really transform, uh, the downtown area. We've got the upcoming signal project, which is right in the core of the downtown. And one of the main items that came out of, um, the work that we, we did with the committee and stuff is to start now and coordinate with DOT to, uh, run through and see what, um, additional streetscape type items that you want to include as that project. You're gonna come in and, uh, do some construction work, that's the best time to get in there and add some, you know, period street lighting, some park benches, uh, define what you want for materials in your sidewalks. Um, you know, all those types of things. So, that was one of the key findings, um, looking at that is, you know, taking a stab at starting to define what those streetscape standards are. Um, coordination with the traffic signal project. And, um, you know, really take advantage of that opportunity that's, uh, that's coming up here. Other items, uh, you know, to preserve and enhance, uh, the historic character of the downtown. Uh, pedestrian safety was right up there, there's some zoning items that people mentioned, uh, that could use improvements or modifications.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Well, number one, the streetcape standard, I'm curious, in other communities, like where, I guess, how are those usually determined? That a planning board function, a council, like, kind of up to us to determine?
One of our action items was to get a group together to kind of look at the next phase of this, and it can be the same downtown advisory group, or it can kind of morph into a kind of an implementation group. And, uh, you know, give it maybe a subcommittee formed within that, uh, start, uh, you know, looking at what the options are and what can be undertaken. Yeah. Um, the other item is just to promote the diversification of, you know, business opportunities, you know, renovate existing buildings into, um, different shops or, or whatever. All right, so the action items, what we ended up doing is organizing these into three different categories. And we had administrative items, evaluation items, and then implementation items. So the administrative items were kind of a town committee type, um, activities, um, and we'll talk about those a little bit further. Evaluation are items that warrant some further study before you jump into doing actual improvements. And the implementation items are items, you know, some of the low hanging fruit things that we can go after and, and do right away, so, you know, get those in. So, within those groups, we ended up, uh, prioritizing them, kind of an A through F ranking. And so the A items were like, uh, these are something items that you want to start immediately on, you know, within the first six months or so of, of a plan. And the B items were like, uh, six to twelve month range, and then C is year two, so on down through, you know, year five plus. Um, so the, the, we, the full table is, is included in the report. You know, and these action items are intended to be kind of a working document, kind of a living document, if you will, that, uh, you know, as opportunities arise within the town, that you can take something from the list, maybe it moves up the list, or maybe it moves down, or, you know, just take advantage of the current situation and adjust that as, as things goes along, and then come back and revisit it. Uh, future date, when things start to check off the list and, you know, check those off and, you know, revamp things from there. So some of the key administrative items, uh, like we mentioned, you know, forming this implementation committee, essentially. Um, you know, identifying where the staff leadership position is probably within the community development, economic development office. And then, kind of what we got shown in red there is getting, you know, a group together to start the coordination with DOT and looking at the streetscape standards. You know, to try to take advantage of, of that opportunity to present itself. And another item is continuing to promote the, uh, facade program. So some of those were, there's a bunch of other ones that are listed out in the document, but those were some of the immediate high priority items. So the evaluation piece, um, uh, we wanted to take a look at pedestrian and, and bicycle movements, uh, come up with an overall plan um, to address ADA deficiencies, uh, if there's any, you know, connectivity pieces and that sort of stuff, and kind of look at that as a whole, try to prioritize where some of those improvements might end up taking place. Um, the other thing was, uh, you know, there's probably gonna be some impacts on parking along Main Street when the signal project comes through, so where do those parking spaces get, you know, reallocated in different areas? So that was another piece that, uh, kind of came out of it. Um, and again, uh, actually coming up of what those streetscape standards are. You know, in terms of crosswalk materials, uh, like I mentioned, period, um, lighting, uh, throughout the downtown. Making sure there's provision for flags and getting those mounted along the main street corridor. Um, and also looking at the overhead utility lines and seeing if there's an opportunity to do something better with those to maybe, you know, potentially to get those in the ground in, in some areas. So on the implementation side, um, one of the key things I think that we can undertake right away is, uh, you know, development of an historic walking trail. And a lot of communities have gone through with this museum in the streets concept. Um, and I tried to reach out to these folks to get some more information on, on the program, but I haven't heard back from them here yet. But, um, you know, something similar to that that kind of gives an overall map of the key historic areas, and then, you know, you can have information plaques or something like that at each of the locations, uh, just to kind of highlight the, the history within the town. Um, promotion of the revitalization plan, you know, and then implementation of, uh, some of the suggested ordinance, uh, zoning updates. Um, you know, once you get through the, looking at some of the parking issues and pedestrian issues and that sort of stuff, there'll be some implementation items that will kind of fall out of those studies there as well. All right, so funding options, um, again, we want to position the town to take advantage of future grant opportunities. Um, you know, looking at the use of the TIF funds, expanding the TIF district. Um, take advantage of any of the DOT funding programs. Um, block grant opportunities, um, I know Paula's worked with the, uh, Kidery Transportation Group or Planning Group there to look at some potential options there for, you know, help fund some of the studies that we're talking about. Um, there's a bunch of other ones that are listed in the report there, too, various different programs, uh, that you can try to take advantage of on, on these things. Um, so those, you know, going through these processes, you've got the market study, you've got the downtown plan here now, you know, the kind of positions the town to be able to, to go after these funds. So in terms of next steps, um, everything looks good with the plan, we're ready to submit this to the state for their final approval. Um, we can do that, uh, tomorrow even. You know, if you've got any other comments or anything, we'd certainly welcome those, but that, that'd be the next step to get their final approval on this, and then, uh, you know, we can uh, get together with, with the group and, uh, you know, start planning out what the next steps and stuff might be and kind of try to hone in on the studies and what those scopes may, may involve. So you can get that lined up for your next, uh, coming, uh, budget process. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Kelly, and she can kind of talk a little bit through here on a couple, uh, kind of concept renderings and stuff that we have, uh, we've gone through and developed here. All yours, Kelly.
Thanks, Jeff. So, hi, I'm Kelly Maggio, I'm a landscape architect and lead planner for this project, uh, as Jeff said, we had a wonderful time working with the committee and the community on trying to identify the different sort of potential projects that can come out of, um, this action plan, and one of them that we, that has been a big ticket item is the main Portland intersection. Um, and the study that was, that came out of that, so here you can see, um, we have the intersection there that's been formalized with a, with a traffic signal pole. Um, you can also see that there are some bump outs that allow the, the, um, crossing within the intersection for pedestrians to be lessened. Um, we have a civic space that is currently there, but it's extended, um, again, to help reduce that crossing for pedestrians within the intersection. Um, and we've also included a mid-block crossing at the town hall and the school there on Main Street.
Yeah.
Can you, just let me know. I'm sure. Uh, one of the other projects that we, we had discussed is the Accounting House Park, um, revitalization type project can take place here. Um, right off of Liberty Street, the idea would be to formalize the, uh, parking area there by having it paved and then having delineated parking stalls. That way we can maximize the parking within this area. One of the spots would be designated for ADA, I believe there are twenty-two spots that can fit there, there may be room to extend it a little bit further to the right side of the page, um, to add more parking if needed. Uh, the other idea is to renovate the sidewalks within the, um, within the park to allow it to be brought up to code and make sure that it meets ADA complacency, um, as you sort of meander from Liberty Street. And then also consider an ADA compliant, uh, kayak launch there at the river's edge. Uh, there's also a little outlook along the river's edge that's, has some benches that have been included. Uh, pavilion is also another option, and then, um, the kiosks can be, uh, upgraded a bit to help identify the historic significance of this park. Um, here are some perspectives that we worked on, um, that speak more to the, uh, intersection at Main and Portland. Um, as you can see here, we wanted to continue to include the flags that are, um, part of a bunch of the uh, parades and celebrations that take place here in South Berwick, uh, the other option is to also include them on decorative street lighting, uh, as you can also see, we've, um, shown this graphic so that it doesn't include any underground, or any o- overhead wires. Instead, the idea would to have those be located underground, so they're not as not as unsightly within that core downtown, helps embellish the visual aesthetics of that intersection. And the other goal here is to only have one traffic, uh, traffic signal pole to help alleviate, um, uh, sidewalk congestion. And again, you can see here on the right, we have that civic center which can include street trees, bike racks, uh, kiosk, civil, um, community kiosks and benches, and things of that nature. Uh, kiosk, civil, um, community kiosks and benches and things of that nature. This is just another view of that same intersection from Portland, uh, looking at the main street area. There you can see that you have that civic center there on the left and again, you can see those bulb outs help reduce the length. Of what the pedestrians would have to access going into that, uh, uh, crosswalk and being in that. Uh, issue with the with the motorists. Um, this is just another angle of the overall model that we had created. Again, the idea is to add in some decorative lighting just to help alleviate some of the. Visibility issues at in the evenings especially, and it just makes it a lot easier for vehicular traffic to be able to visibly see the pedestrians that would be. Going into the intersection in these locations. Again, we have the. The flag poles located on the on the decorative light poles and we've introduced some street trees to help. Alleviate some of the heat island effect that takes place during the summer and then also studies have shown adding street trees help, um, that vertical element basically helps. Um, promote traffic calming within a downtown area. And then the last one that we have here is the perspective drawing of the mid-block crossing that I had originally discussed with. The, uh, the town hall to the school across the street. Um, this mid-block crossing would have rapid flashing beacons. To help, um, signalize to motorists that pedestrians would like to enter into this intersection. Um, again, having those light poles just help increase that visibility aspect of of that whole thing and. And then it also doesn't have to, um, impede on any of the the traffic flow so long as there there's. No pedestrians within that, within that zone. There's also bulb outs to again, help, uh, close the. Distance between, um, a pedestrian having to cross the street. Just makes it a little bit easier for people to be able to navigate that. Um. From a.
Again, this bit, um, so this is, this is like standing in the middle of the road in front of Dunkin' Donuts, looking.
Um. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, just about. Mm-hmm. With that, that is our presentation for this evening. This is our contact information. Um, if you guys have any questions or comments you'd like to have us field for you today or, um, maybe tomorrow, we'd be happy to to do so. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for right here? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thanks for the presentation, um. Just looking, I had looked over. Uh, a bit over the last few days, um. You had mentioned about one light pole. Uh, one traffic light pole. Um, I like the idea. The question that comes to my mind is. Do we have a say in the number of light poles? And I looked at Tim only because it's a whole different project. So, or maybe you guys, because you guys. Essentially talked with that DOT. Do we have a say in dictating? The whole. Numbers and how that configuration is.
We're talking about the traffic light, I don't have any ideas, but one.
Yeah, I think that's going to be, uh, kind of up to the traffic engineers and, uh, people, you know, involved with that particular project and how that gets arranged. Um, certainly, uh, I think, you know, the town can provide input on how that arranged and what, you know, what the options and stuff are, so it kind of has that through. Um, but I think the the main thing is that, you know, we rely on the traffic engineers to kind of make that decision of what's going to be best for making safe passage through those areas.
But we can try to encourage perhaps if possible.
Right.
Another question I have had, um. Jeff, with your portion of it, um, one of the things that stuck out in my head, I was, tell you the truth, I was happy to see that the Vine Street. Uh, Von Woods part wasn't very heavy in the, in the project, um, because I felt personally that that was out of scope. Um, but what was the meaning, what was the reasoning for having that even a piece of? The conversation? I'm not sure that that was clear to me.
I think the main thing there is just recognizing some of the recreational opportunities and stuff that are within that area, uh, access into the river. Um, I think the bridge connection that's not currently in use there currently is is something that, uh, you know, folks kind of indicated that they'd like to see. And just, uh, you know. Where the Longwood State Park is right close to the downtown area, essentially, you know, to make sure that there's a good connection and stuff there.
And I guess that's a clarifying question for for your expertise. As an expert, would you like draw on record and say that Von Woods is? Close to our downtown?
Yeah, I think that's fairly accurate, yeah.
It, you know, close in, you know. Don't know this might be close to someone's house. I don't consider it close to my house, you know, and that.
Right, right.
That's why I'm asking. So, because some people would be like, Von Woods is a whole separate section. If it's close to the downtown, that. Changes how I look at our downtown a little bit, you know, as far as accessibilities.
Mm-hmm. Um. I think the main area, you know, everybody wanted to focus on is kind of within that core downtown. You know, just was worth mentioning that, you know, there was that connection there potentially to the onwards.
Fantastic. Um, I think also I saw in there. You did mention, it was mentioned in the report about TIPS. And, um. Can't remember exactly where it was, but it was. Utilizing current TIPS was a suggestion. However, there was also the suggestion of. Re-writing the TIPS or is it?
I think there was some discussion on expanding the the current TIF districts or rather than being solely transportation orientated, that it was kind of expanded to include some potential downtown revitalization efforts. So it was kind of just. Going through the process of modifying that, which I think is, uh, currently underway.
I think that's all I have right now.
Any other questions? Or does anybody like to add chair of the downtown revitalization committee?
Um, I do, um, but I did want to elaborate on the importance of, um, the reference to Von Woods. Is, um, part of the revitalization was, um, increasing the weight binding of our town. Because there's a lot of hidden gems in our towns that visitors or even residents, new residents might not know, um, where they are. So Von Woods being, um, uh, you know, a, a, a great place. Um, and a part of our town. Um, and part of the process, it's with hopefully doing signing and there's also, um. Where, you know, there's talks about, you know, do we do little kiosks that tell you where to go, how to get there? So Von Woods, even though not in the downtown, there would probably be, uh, it would be a great. Something downtown to tell you how to get to Von Woods, yeah, so.
Did you have anything you wanted to add? As the chair.
Um.
Anything?
I just wanted to, um, this was my first committee as a counselor and what a committee, uh, to, to set out on and, um, I. I can't say enough about the committee because they really had their work cut out for them where in. In the beginning, in the middle and in the end, there's still a lot of, um, people that don't understand downtown revitalization and they don't understand the need and. And it's because when they hear revitalization, they hear change. When they hear plan, they think decision. So revitalization is not change. It's repair. It's revive. It's refreshment. It's restore. It's rejuvenate. It's resuscitate. And plan is not a decision. It is a method of. Devising how to get from A to B. It is not a decision. So. Our committee, we did not make any decisions. That for change, we created a plan. And a wise old man, Tim, once told me. That when, um, you hear from one person, it's a complaint. When you hear from several people, it's a concern. Information that we received from the comprehensive plan, um, surveys from the market analysis and the traffic studies. Literally showed thousands of people in our town had certain concerns. Um, from bicycle and pedestrian system and traffic flow safety, um, improving the econ- economic development of our town. Um, ordinances were outdated, maybe not so business friendly. Our town was starting to get a little lighty, dingy, dare I say, um, and a little upkeep with appearance to, for, not only to preserve the historic character. But to make our townspeople feel good about living in the town that they live in. So. The great thing about this committee is they, I challenged them, I think, in our second meeting. And I said, I challenge you to actually put your proverbial town counselor hat on as a committee member. And in saying that, be the voice of the people through this process. Don't just have your ulterior motives or itineraries of being part of this committee. Listen to your neighbors, listen to your friends, listen to your families, and let's make a plan for the town. And I think with the result, um, of this, um, downtown revitalization plan. Um, I think they did, it was a job well done by the committee and I was very proud to be part of it. Just don't ever ask me to be on another committee. So.
Anything, are you done?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, I don't have any questions. Um, I just want to thank you and thank, um, right here, thank the committee for all the hard work that went into this. Um, and for the public, the, the, our desire to pursue this downtown revitalization plan and also the market analysis that was done. Starting to remember when recently, um, those are two things that were very much an investment in this community that were two things that are really important and from what I understand will help to set us up. To get more grant funding, to be able to fund this, fund this project and in in creative ways, I guess. And so, um. We're just setting ourselves up for success here and, uh, um, just really appreciate all the hard work from everyone and all the meetings and late nights and all of that, um. To pull this together and I think as Melissa said, it is a great. Plan to pick up and move forward and I think with our recent addition or pursuing addition of DeCarlo joining us. Um, as our town planner, kind of the economic development, um, I think we're. Really good, really well positioned. So I'm going to stop and start writing my, oh, thank you. Did anyone from the public have any questions for right here? Go ahead. Uh, so anyone who wants to speak, I'm asking you to come up to the podium and, um, introduce yourself and. Your address or where you live.
Okay, uh, Clay Curtis from, uh. Um, Rattle Street. Uh, I just wanted to, there was a lot of talk about pedestrian bicycle and I saw accommodations for pedestrian, but I didn't see very much for bicycle. And certainly Rattle Street is a very common bicycle path and I think downtown. I didn't see any accommodations for bicycling or bike lanes or anything like that. Is that going to be part of the plan or is that?
I'm going to attempt to answer this and I have right here to keep me honest, but I think the bicycle kind of that category was under that, um, what did you call it, evaluation? Um, where that's, it's, that's a, um, an item kind of captured in the plan, but requires more. More thought, more evaluation, like we don't have all of the pieces yet. Um, and so I think, at least speaking from my perspective, that's included in the plan is something we want to, you kind of, um, flush out further.
And my other question was, um, with the Von Woods connection, of course, right now, you mentioned the bridge, which right now we cannot go over. Um, it isn't really close to downtown if you have to detour around and up Rattle Street. Um, is that perhaps in the future going to be part of the town? I realize it wouldn't be part of this phase.
I'm sorry, wh- what's the?
To to address, uh, being able to use that bridge again, it makes for pedestrians or bicycles.
I think that's a fair point.
So. There has been a committee twice put together to build that bridge. From my perspective of where I'm sitting and living here, I do not see that being a town project. It is. Way too much money for the town to invest and put that bridge over for what we're doing. Um, when the bridge committee was in effect, it was excellent. They were looking for donors and sponsors. And we were tagging on to help them and I would be all for that, but as far as a town project. Um, that's a huge undertaking to try to put something across that. So, I again, it would be great. I used to love going across that bridge myself.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else in the room, questions? I answered. Okay, so we have one person on online. I would like for this person to turn on their camera and state their name and their address and it looks like it's Joe D.
Hi, this is Joe Dalator. I don't have a camera unfortunately, so I can't turn it on.
Sorry, can you, can you slow down a little bit? What is your name?
My name is Joe Dalator. I live on Emery Bridge Road.
Okay.
Okay, and unfortunately I don't have a camera, so I.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have a question? You're muted again.
I was curious to know, thank you. If there had been any consideration about the possibility of, uh, electric car charging as part of the parking plans, because. That would be another thing that some would would attract some folks to town, the ability to do that. We don't have any infrastructure like that in the town right now.
I can't answer that question. I don't know if anyone else on the committee can, since that's factored into the report or the plans at all.
I'm not sure that's explicitly included in the report, but I think that would be something that would come out of, uh, the parking study and that sort of thing to to look at those types of options. Right, but, but that's a good point. I mean, a lot of communities are are looking at that and looking to incorporate, uh, charging stations and that sort of stuff within their downtown areas, so. Be a good thing to look at for sure.
I think Jen, right, we've kind of been doing some research recently about some potential grant options for that, correct?
Yes, I've been working with SMPDC and their grant opportunity, it actually just got increased from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. And it is for things that will help energize green solar panels, EV charging stations, better windows, um, all those kinds of things that we can do with that money.
Great. We will be having a workshop on that. Thank you. So Joe, I, hopefully that answers your question a little bit. I think it's definitely a consideration, um, kind of floating around among a different, a few different, um, initiatives we have gone on.
Yep, thanks.
Yes. Anyone else have, Dan, questions? Any final takers, questions back on?
I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, you, you had mentioned submission to D E C D. What's that process? Uh, is there, you'll, you can submit this and then. They just say, nice job, gold star, and then off you go? Or is there like, is that a stop? Like, they can just stop everything or how does?
My guess is when we sent Terry Ann Holden up at the state, you know, a PDF copy of the report and she'll, she's really good about getting back and and, uh, you know, offering any comments if she has any. On the report, but my guess is that she'll say, yep, this looked great, go for it.
It sounds like a very similar process to the comp plan where we, you know, do all the work. We kind of, and this is a, and a done item later, perhaps you like have a formally accept the report from right here. Um, and then it gets shipped out to the state and the staff feedback for us, so share that with us. Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly right. So tonight, night after the meeting or tonight during the meeting, you accept. It would be appropriate for the council to accept the plan as a draft plan. With, in that motion, send it to the state for evaluation and final approval. They'll, just like the comp plan. As Jeff said, they'll evaluate it, make any changes, send it back. And then touch base with right here. If there's any suggestions for changes, change the report. And then come back to the council for you to finally adopt it and then it's done and it's ready to go. So.
Great. And so, I mean. As I see the plan, I see it as, it's not necessarily a. Roadmap on what downtown will look like. So when we see these pictures, it's not. The South Borough future, it's a potential because when you look at all the action items, they're not, they're not concrete findings. They are. Committees that, that's a concrete thing, right? Get the committee and then the committee can. Talk it all or mul it all, they talk with the town, things like that. So it could change from what that looks like, right? So it's a sort of a, yeah.
So that was just to kind of let your whistle, so to speak. So it's just sort of options that are available to get the ball rolling, just to show some different options that are available. These are, they're probably definitely going to change and, um, the idea would be, once the committees are formed, you would then start looking into preliminary design. And then working your way through community feedback and then going into final design and and start looking at the construction budget and seeing how that would, um, pan out once the funds are available.
Excellent, thank you.
Ken, are you with us again, I saw your hand up a little while ago.
Yes, sorry, I was trying to turn on my camera and I disconnected.
Okay.
So Ken West. Uh, Ken Weston, nineteenth Spring Street and member of the Downtown Revitalization Committee. I just wanted to thank councillor Costella for her leadership. Uh, in taking over the committee, uh, she did a fantastic job and really appreciates. Um, her thoughtfulness and her leadership in, in guiding us as a committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Ken, thank you for your, for starting on, Ken. Okay, I think that wraps up everyone, um, so we can move on from, um, the right here's, um. Presentation for the evening, again, thank you both for coming in this evening, thank you everyone for the revitalization committee who came, um, and for your, for your time. Um, you're welcome to stay, you're not, you're not like you have to stay the rest of the meeting, um. So we'll go ahead and move on to public comments, is anyone who'd like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Um, we'll move on to under business, um, number one, downtown revitalization plan, so we kind of have, have talked at length about. Um, we've now heard from right here's and the downtown revitalization committee with their final findings and our next step is to. Um, kind of accept it to report and presentation as a draft downtown revitalization plan. And then from there, we can essentially tomorrow morning, send it out to the state, um, for their review and approval. Um, and I think we have a few options that, in front of us right now, we could, we could, um. Kind of accept and adopt the plan in its entirety, um, as, as is, kind of as a final, final report, we can adopt it as a draft. And then after any feedback from the state, um, we can then, it, it kind of accept it formally by, or officially, but the final report. Um, which is kind of where, um, I'm leaning this evening, um, or we can not do anything, I personally do not recommend. Um, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, um, adopt the, um. The report from right, the downtown revitalization, um, report from right here's in a draft form, um, pending state approval.
Second.
Discussion? Can you do that, you need a factor? Great. All right, um, all those in favor of adopting the. Report from right here, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Yay. So we'll get that to the state out tomorrow, or in the next couple of days, I'm sure. Um, and then any feedback that we get, we'll have a point, um, in a council meeting where we'll kind of review that and that. Um, and have some kind of additional conversation, yeah, Jeff, go ahead. Yes?
I just want to, uh, thank everybody again, you know, especially the committee and, uh, all the hard work and everything that went into preparing this plan. You know, we've done a lot of these plans for various communities in the state and I really think this is gonna be like the top one. It's gonna be the benchmark that other, other communities will follow here once we submit it, but. It's a very good, good effort here that's been put forth, so. Thanks again.
Thank you, that's very flattering. All right, um, I'm finished with number two, schedule a public hearing, um, for our ballot language.
Madam Chair, I move we schedule a public hearing for ten twenty-two, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM. For the ballot language for the town hall project.
Second. Thank you, fourth floor, yes. Give us its location.
In the third floor of the town hall, sorry.
It's just ready to caution.
Oh, come on.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we schedule a public hearing. In the third floor of the South Borough Town Hall. At six thirty PM to discuss the ballot language for the town hall project.
Thank you, um, second. For a motion, second, um, again, this is just, um, kind of a formality, typical press that we have to do when we, um. Put forth, uh, ballot language and so we'll be having a public hearing instead of the election as we do this. Motion, um, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. And moving on to new business, um, number one, scheduled public hearing for general assistance. Um, so I'll just, kind of, so the state has published, uh, a pen, updated a pen and lead, H and. Um, GI, uh, general assistance housing maximum, maximums for recovery residences for general assistance. Um, and we simply need to make this, make similar, um, accommodations to, um, our ordinance. Um, to accommodate that, and so we need how a public hearing to do that. So I will go ahead and, um, make a motion to schedule a public hearing for October eighth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty PM, third floor of town hall.
Second, and that one has a note to say that, so I just wanted to point.
I need that agenda sheet, not the other one.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Sorry, I just had a question.
Yeah, you're fine.
I understand the state did have this changed, so we have to kind of correct that, so is this public hearing for. The, once the. The ordinance is done, or is it to do the ordinance?
Correct, if I'm wrong, the, the public hearing is to, is, is, or essentially modifying an ordinance. So it's a public hearing, just like we would have for any other ordinance, where we're, we're taking the recommendations from the state and including those in our ordinance, yeah. And just folding them in and, yeah, exactly.
I got you.
Gen- general maintenance, we do it every year.
Every year, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on table, all of the favors, say aye, Jeff, all right, Melissa.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Okay, um, number two, new business, liquor license renewal for the stage house in.
Madam Chair, I do, we accept the liquor license renewal for the stage house in, they are a business in good standing with the community. There have been no issues reported from the chief of police.
Second. New discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff, all right, Melissa. Uh, John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Uh, number three, special amusement permit for the stage house in.
Madam Chair, I move you accept the application for the special amusement permit for the stage house in. Again, there have been no issues reported and past practice has been to waive the public hearing for the special amusement.
Okay. All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Um, and number four, board member resignation slash appointment. Um, so at our last meeting, we had several, um, interviews for board members. And, um, we have one individual, Sam Plinstrom, who is currently on the zoning board appeals and was interested in serving on the district committee. We interviewed with him and we agreed that, um, that would be a conflict of interest to serve on both committees and so we kind of, that. We'd be happy to have you serve on either, um, and he has decided, he has submitted his resignation from the zoning board of appeals. Um, so we need to process that resignation and then make a motion to appoint him to the district committee. So first action, I'll make a motion to, oh, to accept Sam Plinstrom's record resignation from the zoning board, oh, yes.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on second, all of the favors, say aye, Jeff?
All right.
John?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion that's for zero, sorry. Um, and then next, I'll make a, a motion to appoint Sam Plinstrom to the district committee with the term expiring June thirty of two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. All right, that's all of our business for the evening, I will hand over to Sam and Jen for the time and your report, thank you.
Highway bond, they installed new wall caps on Academy Creek. In front of Borough Academy. Um, clean a ditch, powderhouse, water, powderhouse hill to the water district, installed new fence, powderhouse to find the water. Repair the fences and the boat planning in the soft field. Made road drive, tarred the sidewalk on Agminicus Road, hold the drive. Cleaned up the retention pond of sediment, the bed of grain going via the damn road for stormwater, police departments had two arrests. Six accidents, thirty-seven traffic stops, Sergeant Pelkey was awarded the community service commendation award. For his work in community relations, um, the citizens academy has been postponed. Again, due to lack of piston, fire department had twenty calls in the last two weeks, three hundred and twelve date. Um, after thirty-two years of service, assistant chief. Um, Ray Delcourt is, and serving is also the BMA director. Um, has turned in his resignation from the town. And the fire department, um, effective October fifteenth, Chief Ham will be assuming the role of BMA director of the town, which is normal. For fire chiefs and Chief Ca- Charlie Cow will remain as deputy director of BMA, assisting chief Ham on. And day-to-day stuff is ready. Um, we want to thank, I want to thank Ray for his efforts and his time. He spent a lot of years going on call, on night weekends and holidays and dedicating that to the community. And I know from the council perspective, the law's mine, um, and everyone else, we wish. Ray only the best of luck in his retirement and his doing endeavors, so. He, as you know, he, he was, he retired from Pratt and Whitney and he brought him back to run. Night shift plant down in North Carolina and they just made him an officer, really, really, so. So for him, we wish him the best, thank him for his thirty-three years of service, it's a long time to do anything. And that's a long, long time dedicated time in the community. Oh, unfortunately, as you know, the CEO was out on medical leave, so Chief Ham was filling in as deputy code officer. Um, he's got eight inspections. Um, on the planning, the, we signed the contract and the whole book updates excited. Um, the new transfer sta- stations that are available, they'll be good in two years.
At the library, the August stats, the door count was two thousand six hundred and thirty-seven visitors, the items checked out were two thousand nine hundred and one. Books lent to other libraries, thirty-nine, books borrowed from other libraries for forty-two. Reference questions answered, seven hundred and thirteen, computer uses seventy-nine. And thirty-three programs, two hundred and forty-eight total attendees. On September seventeenth, the town employee was Chief Burger. For the luncheon and that was very well attended, they had a lot of good questions to ask the boys too. The friends of the library have a scheduled book sale for October twenty-fourth. They are suspending book donations because they did receive in, in blocks over this past summer of donations. Economic development, we have DeCarlo Brown, he is starting Monday, we're excited to have him join our team. Recreation, this is the third week of soccer and there are about two hundred and fifty-four kids in the program this year, twenty-two teams, thirty-eight coaches. The new dance program collaboration with Borough Academy kicked off last week. And Nikki attended a thank you dinner put on by the pumpkin man director, Rachel, and she praised Public Works, the police, Rescue, for all their support and help in putting on such a successful event. And expressed that other communities aren't as lucky as us to have such support. In the senior program, on the eighteenth, they had a lunch to learn on managing stress and anxiety and that was very well attended as well. On the nineteenth, they, um, went to a show together at the Castlepin Banquet Center. This week is National Lobster Week, so they are gonna have eighty-two seniors having lobster rolls for the evening. In assessing, they are still working on the townwide reevaluation, they'll be working on a witch trot area next week, they took the week off, they were in that, they're in Tuckin. They are answering a lot of questions from the public and the assessing, um, office has noticed that most of the folks who had their taxes stabilized last year. Are the ones who are experiencing the two-year increase of taxes, so they had the two-year jump, whereas a lot of people had it spread out over the two years. Uh, she's also working on board amendments in one separate, um, taxes so far. In the clerk's office, we hired our new representative, started this week, Erin, she started yesterday. They are very busy with absentee ballot requests and we were working on a lot of political setbacks, which I'll have to comment and elaborate on.
Put a mic on your desk.
Yeah, you can sit there.
Do I have, okay, you said go to the podium, so I'm just following what you told me to do earlier.
Thank you.
We gave you a mic to talk to.
I just followed directions, but yes, I would gladly sit back down, good evening, guys. Um, so. With the change in the polling place and everything that's been going on, um, with the election and, um, how important elections are. Um, there's been a lot of questions, um, regarding around the, um, the activities that are allowed around voting, the voting place itself. Um, so, through a lot of discussions between, um, the Deputy, Deputy Secretary of State Julie Flynn, town manager Helen. Uh. The town attorney Phil Sosser and myself, we have officially determined. Um, through the law, that is titled twenty-one A. That chapter nine, subsection two, article four, section six eighty-two, if anyone would like to look forward, uh, fully at the language. We have determined that the two hundred and fifty feet radius prohibiting any election hearing, which means influencing or advertising around the elections. Is the, you know, is the area of, the entire area of Central School, which is our new polling place. And town hall. The reason behind town hall is because we do process early absentee voting in my office, which is by law constitutes as another voting place. Um, to be outside that two hundred and fifty feet, um, radius, to be on that safe side. By all means, ask questions, but we've determined, you must be past P. Gatlin. Or Main Street. Or, um, and on the other side of the street, past the H. House, and so on the other side of Paul Street. If we were going to be on this side, it would be Dunkin' Donuts and on. And from Academy Street and on. Um. That prohibits, that prohibits the following, um, activities, so when I say election hearing, I mean, there's no advertising. So you can't wear your pins, your, your things or anything like that, however, I do want to, um. To make, make it known that, like, make America great again is a slogan and it's not. Part of the prohibition, or prohibition, and I can't, I'm sorry, um. But if they were to wear Trump or anything like that, or anybody on, on the ballot, sorry, even Tiffany Roberts, if they said anything like that, it would not be allowed. Um, speaking of Tiffany Roberts, she does like to say hello to people at the door, very, very legal thing, she can do that, she just cannot say who she is. Cause that's what she's going for, it has to do with the ballot. Seeing with our town councillors and the school board and whatnot. Um, and that also goes for your dogs, so you can't have your Trump leash or your Biden leash or, I'm sorry, hairs now, I apologize. Um, but that is, that is part of that. However, the only exception there is. If you were to drive in your vehicle to go vote at voting day and you have one of those political stickers on your car. That is fine, because you will be leaving. Um, but that, that's the only exception for that.
Um, and, and that, in, in that, the, what, what we're talking about, that, this is applicable from now until the election, not just on election day.
For Central School on election day, for town hall now until, uh, the day after elections, so we're gonna say midnight of. Of, uh, what is it, the sixth, all these numbers are plenty, so yes, November sixth is when that would be. Um, yeah. Um, another part of that, it has to do with, um, petitioners. Petitioners are not to engage with the voters before voting, so all of the petitioners that we have. Are stationed to be at the exit, whether that be in the designated alcove, if they've gotten the first one, first start to be inside. Any overflows will have a designated outside section. Um. I believe I colored everything, Tim, I do what you did.
Yep.
Okay, um, but by all means, if anyone has any further questions, please reach out to myself or Mark's app.
And I did, um, I spoke with someone about this earlier, but I think it would be helpful if we could get a map of, um, just with kind of what those bounds are. Um, where people, particularly around the sign holding, um, just in the next few days, but. Yeah.
And I just want to say that this is not private property, yes, but if they do own private property, that. You know, like the business next door, cause that does pose questions, well, what about a Roman Joe's? Well, if a Roman Joe's gives you, or somebody gives you permission, that's not my end.
Yep, so just for, for the public, this entire kind of topic is around, um. Signholding, advertising, any, any, any material that's election related, um, as it pertains to a, a polling location, so. Across the street from the school is our polling location, um, going forward. And then town hall, because it's a place where people can come in and fill out their absentee ballots, we are doing all of the ballot. Election preparation here, and so that same role will always apply to town hall, being our kind of base of location.
During election time, yes.
Yes, very much.
Yeah, um, it, it, the, the, what Julie Flynn said to me today, and I give her, said, Deputy Secretary of State, and she's the, um, oldest, oldest. It, it, the, the, what Julie Flynn said to me today, and I guess I'm Deputy Secretary of State, and she's the oldest elections director in the country. So, I'm very, very honored to work with her. She's very knowledgeable. She posed the, the voting place, because that's what it says in, in the Town Hall. So, it says, it says, "On public property within two hundred and fifty feet of the entrance to the voting place, as well as within the voting place itself." Voting place under, under definition is anywhere, any place that someone is casting a ballot. So, once absentee, in-person absentee voting starts in my office, that's when we are constituted as a voting place. And then, once active voting is going on at Central School, that's when it's the voting place. Just like of that law, legal type.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that, right? In my area.
Move on. I just had, wanted to clarify. So, we don't typically have this sort of conversation around voting. I just want to be clear in my head, the only reason we're having that, all that detail that you gave us is currently, is because we, we've changed, the only thing that's changed is that South Borough has changed its polling place. State law hasn't changed, right?
State law hasn't changed, no. And there has been some questions from concerned citizens around this, this, this specific topic, and we're trying to address all of that for everybody.
Absolutely, right. I felt like I had a firm handle on the state law, so I was just thinking, oh, it's all sounds the same, so good.
Same old twenty-one A.
A nice mix of location change and just trying to be proactive and getting information out there so that people are very clear on what they are and are not allowed to do come Election Day, to save everyone headaches.
And, I'm sorry, and so, where's the two hundred and fifty feet from the door here? Because tomorrow, that's two hundred and fifty feet we need to worry about as well, right?
So, once absentee voting takes place in my office, so that's once I get the ballots, I will put a post up saying, hey, this is not technically a voting place. I'll put up like, I don't know, a sign in my office or on the door or something. But the, how it is, is it says, the law is from the entrance or within the voting place itself, so you have multiple points. So, the two hundred and fifty feet would start from the my office door, where the actual conducting of the voting, the voting ballots would happen. But then also, the two hundred and fifty feet would start the second that voter enters the building. So, on Central School for Election Day, you're entering the building itself from the main entrance next to the parking lot. You'll come in, and you'll go out, but then you're going into the gym where all the voting tablets are, which is the voting place again, but within the building. So, that's all the, I don't know, voting entrance.
Right, so on voting day, I'm, in my mind, I'm fine with that, we've got a bubble, they're, they're going to intercept in the middle of the street. But Central School is only on voting day, but Town Hall will be a longer period. Do we know where that two hundred and fifty foot bubble is?
Yeah.
But we're actually, so, so, I have that.
I got it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
That's okay. G I S week, but a great part of the year's goal, we got a back come up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Any else?
Maybe you have this one more thing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, sorry.
They turn it over.
You go.
One thing that is going to be a little different, you're going to see people, election workers walking around in orange vests. I just ordered those today, so anyone that will be working the elections, which I have not, this side yet. So, anyone watching that has put in any inquiries about polling, working, I will get to you. It's all about the changes, but they will be getting a vest that's orange and clearly distinguishes that who is working and who is not. They'll pay town, South Borough staff on it. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Good for that change.
Did you all have anything else? Or your board?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm done, I promise.
Thank you. I can remember where you left off.
In my area, I have six business meetings and twenty-nine staff meetings in the last two weeks. We did have the carpets cleaned here in the Town Hall last Friday. The audit started this, yesterday, and Peter Hall will be here all week. And as I mentioned earlier, the community resilience grant that I'm working on has an increase of fifty to seventy-five thousand, which I was very excited to hear about, which can be used for any green energy. We have penciled in a workshop for Thursday, October twenty-fourth, for the community to have some input and how we should spend, how we should go for that grant, and what we should spend it on.
Jen, for that public hearing, is that, is that what we like a council public hearing?
It's going to be a workshop.
Or just a workshop, okay, I bet like a thing we're running, like I'm going to run.
No, S and P D C would run it.
Okay, cool.
That's all I have in there.
Cool, thank you. Does anyone have anything?
So, what I'm passing out is what I'm passing out is a letter from the Great Works Regional Land Cross that they now officially closed on their two parcels that they, that we had set aside money for them, their project. Also included in that letter is a thank you to the town, you folks for supporting them and helping them get their goals through. So, they now have seventy-nine acres and a quarter mile of shorefront along the Santa Falls River that's been reserved. That's a lot.
I was going to say, I wrote, wrote about this, so in the past few days, I can't remember when, there was a really nice article in the Portland Press Herald about this project. Oh. They, yeah, just a really lovely article in Portland Press Herald touching on this project, I think it was on the front page or close to it.
Love, the Love and Wood Memorial benches around town, we have been pressured to wash. They'll be stained next, and then the frames will be painted by Public Works crew. Last piece I have.
No, no.
I got it, Justin. So, the last thing we, that I have is, I informed the council, May Department of Transportation, have informed us the streetlight project to not make the funding cut for this federal budget cycle. They are committed to doing the project. The two main reasons that they felt that was the case was because of our project is not finished engineered yet. They're still doing, doing a surveying. They've been here three weeks doing a surveying on Main Street. They don't have the project in its finality yet, because they submitted it pre the engineering plans. So, they're going to resubmit it in March. And the second reason was they ended up taking some of that federal dollars for FEMA damages because they had so much damages thrown away when this past spring and summer from the summer storm. So, the, Steve Cole said they're still very committed to doing the project, still a hundred percent behind it. Just they're going to submit it in March and hope for the October funding for, to get it going in twenty-six. But they said they were very committed to it. It's, they're a hundred percent behind it, so that's the last piece I had.
Thank you very much. Counselor, comments? I don't want to go first?
I will.
Okay.
I don't have anything to say.
Great. Melissa? Did you want to go next, or John?
Please. Go back there. One request about the citizens working with the police, where they've had to cancel both of the. I absolutely want to do it, but it's the hours. It's three to five on Thursdays for like a month. Could we maybe talk to the department and see if we could make that a little bit later in the evening? And I think, I think three to five, just kind of, like, some people are still in work, just getting out of work. I think we would have more participation if we could maybe do something about those hours. I would totally be on board. I just would never make it, so. Other than that, that's it.
John?
Uh, that time of year again, September twenty-eighth, Saturday, all small game season opens. Duck and everything opens on October first, so again, before we make all the posts, and we're worried, there's going to be shots happening. We live in a great place, John. That's all I have.
And I am just going to make a plug for the District Musical that is coming up. I wrote the dates down, eleven fifteen, November fifteenth and sixteen, and November twenty-second and twenty-third. It's always a great show, and we have a lovely new director who is making her debut, so check it out. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, who will be adjourned?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.